Good evening, everyone. My name is Mayor Ari Bernstein. The time is now 7:30. This is the April 28th, 2022 work session of the Allen Dale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us in the audience and on Zoom webinar. At this time, I ask everyone to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be one opportunity during the work session, this meeting for public comment. We will advise you at the appropriate time. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice requirements have been satisfied. News for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website. Published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year. And copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the April 26, 2022 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. And has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan. Councilwoman Lovesolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilwoman Wozinski is absent and Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you. Public comment, this is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone at the podium. State your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes to address the governing body. So why don't you come on up?
Thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name is Amit Khan from 26 Beatrix Street, Allen Dale. And this is. Okay. All right, well, they'll introduce themselves one by one, I guess.
Wonderful.
So we wanted to come here today and talk a little bit about the library. We've been getting just incredible use out of it and you know, want to make sure all of you know what a wonderful library we already have. And I personally found out a few months ago, we have a note tree on staff. So that's been very efficient for me to get my work stuff done. But the kids will talk about values for the library, but we are immigrants to this country or immigrants to this town. And never had access to such a fantastic library before. And the thing that I think I've seen the kids enjoy the most is how interactive it is. You know, if you live in the world there, it's a knowledge economy. The library represents the knowledge base. So just makes sense. Sid here sometimes has trouble reading, but he loves reading to the therapy dog in the library, right? So just wanted to let you guys know Patty, Josh, all of them, they're phenomenal dogs.
And like to hear from from your family as well. I I agree and I think we all do, but to varying degrees, the library is one of the jewels of Allen Dale. Patty, Josh, everyone, Sam, when he was there. It's they're so helpful, the amount of resources that they have and they're ever they're expanding. Patty Durso, the library director was here maybe a month ago and spent a good 45 minutes going over all the things that they do, that they provide. Most of the things that we're even not aware of. I mean, there are just so many benefits. So you're preaching to the choir, but we certainly love to hear it from you as well. So what do you like best about the library?
Well, I like that the library has a big field outside and I always like to walk to the library after school. It's a very good place. I thought I read a lot of books from the library. And I found my favorite series at the library and the and I've checked out more and we have checked out. You save for 68. Sixty and sixty-three thousand and six dollars and four cents. And for from from checking out books from the library.
That's great. That's wonderful. So so state your name for the record so that Michelle, it'll be in the record.
Sid Don.
That's wonderful. And do you do you also use the eBooks? Do you have, do you get some books through Libby?
Yeah.
Yeah, isn't that great? That's amazing, right? When you want something you can know on then on your e-reader, your iPad or your computer, it's right there.
So what is your favorite series of books?
I survived and I found it at the library.
I survived and I found it at the library. That's awesome.
That's great.
Hi, my name is Jay Don. Um, I used the library, like Sid said, every day I walked to the library after school with all my friends. Sometimes if you're lucky, the eighth graders at our school will be like making cookies and selling them at the library. The library does like so many fun activities, like there was an Earth Day workshop. You got to play, you got to plant plants and flowers. I still have them in my backyard. And there was also Lego club. You can build Legos. There's much more clubs like a Harry Potter club that I attend and um. Yeah, I just love the library.
It's great. So it unfortunately normally conflicts with our council meetings, but they have a puzzle night.
Yeah.
So have you done that?
No, I haven't tried that yet.
You ought to try that. They look like they're having fun. It's a jigsaw puzzle that you put together and you race, you know, other teams. Yeah, that's great. It was so great to hear it.
And you should probably let us all know when the cookies are gonna be there.
Yeah.
It makes the brownies too.
Ah, that's good to know too.
That's great.
Well, thank you for your time.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Yeah, we're so thrilled to have you in Allen Dale and we're so thrilled that you came tonight. Our pleasure. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Mr. Thomas, how are you today?
I'm fine. Thank you.
And you? I'm doing, I'm doing well. Thank you.
I'll just take a minute to ask my questions and I'll go.
Sure, and name and address for the record and as you know, I'm probably not gonna answer.
30 Arlington Avenue. Mayor, do you know or can you tell me if the closing on 220 has been scheduled?
It has not been scheduled.
Is not, no. Can you tell me if the financial agreement pertaining to 220 has been reached with the between the borough and the Hampshire?
Financial agreement. The pilot. I think it wasn't approved, but hasn't been signed. They wanted that approved. If you want to speak to that, you can. I'm not gonna speak to that.
I believe I believe it has been approved and agreed upon, but has not been signed. I think at the time of the closing, it will be signed, but I believe it has been agreed upon.
It has to be signed before the closing.
It'll be before or at the closing.
As far as you know, it's been agreed but not signed. Is that the status?
Yeah, you know what? I I wouldn't, I would rather you not put you on the spot. Mr. Borsey is works with Ray Wiss, our borough attorney. Mr. Wiss is not here. Tom is wonderful. He's a very capable attorney, but he doesn't have the same kind of hands on.
I understand.
So I'd rather I would rather not ask those questions of Tom who's sitting in for right.
Would your, the answer be the same with regard to the other two agreements, which must be reached before the closing could occur? Though one has to do with the facility, the other one has to do with the administration of the apartment building through the Allen Dale Association. So if that's the same answer, that's perfectly all right with me.
Right, I don't, I believe, I don't believe those agreements have been executed for 220 yet, so. But you can come back when Councilwoman Wozinski is here or when Ray Wiss is.
All right, fine. Thank you.
Sure.
May I make one other comment?
Of course.
When you were first took office as mayor.
Yes.
You invited residents to meet with you in appointment by appointment, I believe, Saturday mornings.
Yes.
Obviously, that had to be discontinued during the during the virus. Have you any thought about reinstating that that program?
Sure, yeah, in fact, we liked it, we enjoyed it, we liked meeting with the residents on an informal basis and you know, we I don't know any reason why we wouldn't do it again this year.
And what will be the procedure?
We will figure out the right Saturdays. We did it at we did here, we did it in town. Yeah, we did. It was better in the middle of town because people, I think, didn't really want to come here, but you know, for a cup of coffee. So we'll advertise it and we'll make it known and.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Walter Widmer, 38 Hamilton. I was not planning to say anything, but I'd like to say thank you very much to Mr. Thomas for doing what he is in regard to 2030. I have been very interested in the process. Unfortunately, I'm ignorant. And I'm guilty of that whole thing on that basis. Thank you, sir. He knows left.
Thank you, Walter. Your comments are always appreciated. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone. Agenda review, as I said before, we have Tom Borsey filling in for Borough Attorney Ray Wiss. Tom, thank you very much for joining us. On our regular session agenda tonight, there'll be a public hearing for our 2022 grant application to Bergen County Open Space, which we will be speaking to at that time. We have introduction of ordinance 22-02. And Councilwoman Homan, if she gets on at some point, she may speak to that. What's that? Okay.
Yeah.
We have five resolutions on the consent agenda, including Resolution 22134 that was added yesterday concerning our sewer agreement with Saddle River. Please note that there was a minor amendment to the resolution today. I hope everyone has had a chance to review it. Thank you to everyone who pitched in at the very last minute to get it correct, to get it rectified or revised accordingly. Does anyone have any questions or comments on any of these agenda items? Okay. Council reports, Councilman O'Connell.
Thank you, Mayor. With the DPW, six tons of asphalt we used to fill potholes throughout the borough was that the last couple of weeks, Ron?
Last week.
Last week. Spring cleanup of the borough facilities have been completed. The daily maintenance of the ball fields are being handled by our veteran employee John and our new employee Jason Hoefler. And preparation of the lake is going great. Thanks to Rich and our other new employee, Adam Rothenberg.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilman O'Toole.
I have Councilman Wozinski's also.
All right, you're gonna have three minutes to address the public?
Just kidding. I'll give Amy's first and traditionally she comes to form it. Administration Finance, our budget was introduced at our last meeting. We plan adopting the budget at the next meeting, May 12th. Our accounting firm will be on hand to answer any questions from the public. And we are looking to finalize the capital budget in the next few weeks. As far as 220, 230, we've had several meetings with the team as well as the council over the past six months. COVID, the economy, environmental issues and supply chain delays have impacted the project to 220 West Crescent will potentially affect the scope. There will be a date announced for a town hall in the near future, once we have all the info gathered so we can update the residents. And thanks to John, Michelle and Tatiana for their work on potential grant this past week that may assist us with this project. For me, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting next week for our monthly meeting. We've got a pretty light agenda. Things are very well in hand over there. This evening, we have a resolution to start employment of Joseph Mara's relief relief crossing guard. We're in need of relief crossing guards, which is why the request for his early start date. Today was onsite inspection for the reaccreditation purposes. Two independent assessors visited police headquarters and inspected all aspects of the operation to ensure compliance with established standards. Thank you to the staff and to the two accreditation managers for their hard work, which resulted in a stellar compliance report. With the assistance of John Gill and Tyler Yakarino, a series of pedestrian and traffic related public service announcements were recorded. Short video clips will be released every Friday for the next few months, starting tomorrow. I've seen one. I kind of, I kind of love it. Short, sweet. It's fantastic. The numbers, the year-to-date fire calls, 74. Year-to-date EMS calls, 258. And year-to-date police record entries and calls for service, 5,581.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Lovesolo.
Land use board, we met last Wednesday morning. As usual, we addressed some resident property situations and I think came up with some good suggestions and solutions around those. One of the things we also decided we're gonna work on is oftentimes, you know, residents will call up with issues and and you know, Ron will speak to them, but we've decided to just try and kind of put together a letter that's kind of an all encompassing that we've acknowledged that they've reached out to us and that we've addressed their their concerns so that there's something in writing that we can, that they have and that we would have. We are going to tweak our borough code a little just to put the enhanced setbacks when people are adding on to their properties, doing construction that go into place when they add on. Those setbacks are in a place right now that isn't always obvious to to new property owners and to to folks. So we're gonna just tweak that a little to make it easier to to see and and I just want to say we had a great day on Saturday. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Ari speak to it. At the Fell House, we did a collection of clothing and we collected over 5,600 pounds of clothing and it was spectacular. People were very happy to donate it. And the Fell House made 20 cents on every pound, so we made over a thousand dollars on that day. So it was fabulous.
That was great.
And I want to thank Michelle and I want to thank John and Tatiana and everyone involved. It was just a great, great day. So I'm gonna let Ari speak now.
Thank you.
Oh, Liz. Hi, Liz.
Okay, so I'm gonna give my report and then Councilwoman, Councilwoman Homan, she can. So as Councilwoman Lovesolo said, Allen Dale Spring Cleaning Day, it was and Recycling Day was a huge success. I mean, how many people attended, came with their cars filled, the the looks on their face when they could they could drop everything off. I mean, they were just so happy.
So thankful. So turn it over.
It's I just want to know it started at nine and when I got here at 7:22, people were already lined up and and dumping.
That's right, yeah. So a special, special thank you to Michelle Ryan, Tatiana Markey, John Gill, Amanda Richards, Ron Kishner, Dan Richards, Rich McDowell, Adam Rothenberger, Chief Dylan, Councilman Lovesolo, Pat Finn, Mike Limatola, Mark Savastano and the Allen Dale Green Team for all of their efforts to put, to pull this together for our residents. A special thank you to Allen Dale Acme and especially their manager Jerry for distributing free reusable shopping bags at the event. And we hope to make this an annual event in town. And I don't, I don't want to miss, where was it? Was the eighth grade bake sale, eighth grade?
Yes.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah, the eighth grade bake sale and food collection to benefit the Center for Food Action was also very successful. And the Rice Krispie treats were wonderful and they were, they were, they were happy to be there and it just, it was a great day in Allen Dale. And reported the tonnage from Saturday's collection, 8,100 pounds of paper was shredded. We almost completely, I completely filled the truck. 5,319 pounds of clothing, linen, stuffed animals and games were collected at the Fell House. I saw those bags. Those were amazing.
Oh, my gosh.
Right.
It's crazy.
Several thousand plastic bags were collected towards a free Trex bench. A good amount of unwanted and expired prescription drugs were also collected by the APD. Chief Dylan, I saw you there. We spoke, we we spent time. Thank you for that. And 17,855 pounds of e-waste, such as electronics, small appliances were collected. All of these recycled materials will be properly recycled, upcycled and saving them from landfills and waterways. The borough is also saving by not having to pay fees to dispose of these items. Great job to Allen Dale. Great job to all involved. Jiff training earlier today, prior to tonight's meeting, certain members of the governing body and Ron and Tyler took a training class and Don, I forget who else was here, presented by Jiff and our insurance risk manager, which was very informative. The borough will receive $250 credit off our premium for each attendee up to $2,000. A reminder, I spoke about it at our last meeting, our auditor Paul Lersh will be joining us at the May 12th meeting to make a presentation on our 2022 municipal budget. He will answer any questions that the governing body and the public may have during the public hearing. The second quarter property taxes are due by May 1st with a grace period to pay until May 10th. If paid after that, interest will be due, will be collected from May 1st. Yesterday, I met with Superintendent Michael Barkett Oppone and Marie Engelite from Brookside School, as I've done every year, maybe for the last six years. The other members of the finance committee could not make it, but we went over the budget, their school budget that they were then presenting that night to the public. It can't, you all know, because you all have kids who went through the school system or going through the school system, just it's a class act, they're just doing the right thing. They have their eye on the ball. You know, they're, they're, they're just the budget, they're spending the money where it's supposed to be spent. They're trying to save it for 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 the capital improvements that they need to need to make. We know property values are, you know, are at a good level in Allen Dale because people want to move in for for the school system. So really, the proof is in that. And one thing that I didn't know, but he shared in US News and World Report, the rankings of the schools came out. Brookside was number nine in the state, number nine in the state and number five of public schools in, which is phenomenal.
Yeah.
So special thanks to them for all that they do. And on Facebook today, although I try not to go there, there were questions about someone was complaining about their water bill. And they were referencing that this was because we sold the system and you know, and that's what happens when you sold the system. So the sale of the underwater system has not been finalized and is still in progress. And water rates have not increased and under the agreement with Suez, now Veolia, they will not increase this year. If you think there's a mistake, please reach out to Suez, Veolia at 855-367-6708. And as always, you can feel free to reach out to the borough or to Councilwoman Homan. And if you feel the need to make inaccurate wild accusations on Facebook, I can't stop you, but know that you're misinformed. So that's all that I have for my report. Councilwoman Homan.
Hi, everybody. Hope everyone.
Liz.
Hi. Sorry that I'm remote, but obviously health and safety first. So I will though jump into my report because I think it's really important that I share all the information prior to the beginning of our meeting. The first thing, though, it's important that I always share about the water moratorium, that the shut-off moratorium that ended on March 15th of 2022. However, prior to the shut-off of any residents' water, the law requires that we offer an installment plan for the unpaid balance. Interest fees may be applied to the arrearsages. Bill assistance and arreage forgiveness plans are available through the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. And everyone is encouraged to visit our website where more information will be available. And actually, since we're talking about the website and social media, I will just now instead of waiting until the end of my report, echo just what Mayor Bernstein has shared that probably social media is not the place where people are actually going to get answers. And the last rate increase that we had was January of 2021, so a year ago. So if people are seeing increased bills, it would be due to increased water use. So they should examine, you know, whether or not they have any leaks and such like. So thanks, Ari, for overviewing that. Next, looking at our agenda this evening, I wanted to remind the council and anybody from the public that back in December of 2021, our council passed an ordinance granting consent and permission for Suez Water, New Jersey, Inc. to furnish water treatment, storage and conveyance service in the borough of Allen Dale, New Jersey. And this basically allows Suez/Veolia now to operate furnishing water to all of our residences, our businesses and our governmental buildings. And in an abundance of caution, we are reintroducing this ordinance tonight with expanded notification to ensure that all of the technical steps of advertising this ordinance are followed without question. So the ordinance itself has not changed from the December 2021 past ordinance. And for the benefit of the public that may listen to this recording, I'd like to share the same two points that from the ordinance that I called out to the council back in December. The first one is that the exclusive and perpetual consent and permission to furnish water conveyance to the borough and all of its residents, businesses and government buildings is hereby granted to Suez and its its successors and assigns subject to the approval of such consent and permission by the Board of Public Utilities of the state of New Jersey. So this section is important to note as Hackensack Water became United Water and United Water became Suez. And now we're seeing Suez is becoming Veolia. And this consent ordinance will be valid for, you know, whatever the water company is, so long as the approval is granted by the Board of Public Utilities. So we're very fortunate to have a, an active New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. The second point is that the consent granted herein shall be subject to Suez combining with all applicable laws of the borough and or the state of New Jersey, including but not limited to any and all applicable statutes and administrative agency rules and or regulations and contingent upon the borough and Suez executing the agreement of sale between the borough of Allen Dale and Suez Water, New Jersey, Inc. And this section is important to note today because we have now signed the Allen Dale purchase agreement. So that contingency has been met and we're now awaiting for this to be approved by the Board of Public Utilities. So I'm hopeful that all the council members will again vote in support of this ordinance. I don't know if anybody has any questions. If you do yell, because I can't see you while I'm reading this. Okay, hearing only chuckles and it's the same, so I feel good about that. I also wanted to just mention that a small group of us met with James Fahey of Suez. Thank you, Ron and Mike Freeland. We discussed summer 22, 22 water needs. And as I promised at the last meeting, I wanted to keep everybody in the public updated. But James feels that absent drought-like conditions in Allen Dale, we should not have a water shortage. So as a reminder, Allen Dale perpetually operates on phase one watering schedule. And this water schedule is on the Allen Dale website under the Water Department. So basically, it's that pending, you know, whether you're odd or even on your address, you can water three days a week. So that will share with you what three days a week and then we have one recharge day. And then the other important part of our agenda this evening is, as I shared at our last meeting, Saddle River has asked Allen Dale to accept sewage into our connections with Northwest Bergen Sewer Authority that will come from 112 unit development that's in process in Saddle River. So Saddle River has asked Allen Dale to consent to and execute a State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Water Quality Treatment Works approval permit application. It's a big, loud, big mouthful. And that would be agreeing that Allen Dale will allow sewage to flow through and be treated by Northwest Bergen Sewer Authority. And you know, we understand as mayor and council and as you know, Ron and everybody working in our borough that, you know, Saddle River needs to be in compliance with fair share housing and we certainly want to be a good neighbor to Saddle River and not hold up this, you know, development unnecessarily. And so because of this, we are presenting Resolution 22134 in the consent agenda. And I'm, you know, I know everybody already read the actual resolution, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments that, you know, first, the resolution authorizes Mayor Bernstein to sign the consent with two major conditions. And they're listed in the resolution. The first one is the consent of Allen Dale and its execution of the application are specific condition on Saddle River conducting at its sole expense a sewer flow capacity study confirming that Allen Dale has sufficient sewer flow capacity to accommodate the additional 112 Saddle River developmental units. And the results of the study shall be provided by Saddle River to Allen Dale and is subject to our, to Allen Dale's acceptance and approval. The second condition is that the consent of Allen Dale and its execution of the application are further specifically conditioned on Allen Dale and Saddle River agreeing on the cost to be charged to Allen Dale and Saddle River for the for the sewer flow and the future sewer costs that may be ascribable to sewer flow from Saddle River to Allen Dale. So you'll see in the actual the actual resolution that there is some the actual resolution that there is some, some corrections that are made to the last, to point number three. And so that's what's contained in there. I'll ask, Michelle, did I capture that correctly?
Right, yeah. So Liz, right, I will read from it, the, the, the point that you are saying, I'm gonna read verbatim. The consent of Allendale and its execution of the application are further specifically conditioned upon Allendale and Saddle River agreeing on the cost to be charged by Allendale to Saddle River for sewer flow and any sewer system cost that may be ascribable to the sewer.
Flow.
Flow. From Saddle River to Allendale.
Okay, great. I just wanna make sure we have all the verbiage correct. So the mayor, the saddle, the other thing, and I know we're getting at eight o'clock, Saddle River Mayor and Council. So that's the part about the resolution, just so that the council and the.
Hey Liz, I don't wanna cut you off, but it's eight oh one, so I have to end the work session?
Okay.
Okay. So just to keep protocol and we can come back, you can, I'm not gonna cut you off, you can say whatever, whatever you feel is appropriate. Motion to end the work session? Fall in favor?
Hi. Bye.
Okay. Thank you. That is the end of the work session. We are now going to begin the regular session. The time is now eight oh one. This is April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person and via Zoom webinar. At this time, I would ask the public present to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities for those present to speak during this time and we will advise you at the appropriate time. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this, sorry, notice of this meeting by the April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. Sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Thank you very much. All please rise to salute the flag. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso, absent. Councilwoman Willsinski, absent. Mayor Bernstein.
Here. So Councilwoman Holman, if you have more to say, and you, you absolutely can, I, you can continue now or I can pitch it to you later.
I actually think I can just wrap it up because I only have a couple more sentences to say.
Sure.
Just that, that resolution, it is important, I, I think that everybody on the council for sure understands that the Saddle River Mayor and Council must also adopt a mirror resolution that acknowledges, you know, these contingencies that we have set forward. And my understanding is this is planned to be done at their next council meeting in May. So Mayor Bernstein won't sign the documents until that resolution has been passed. And, you know, certainly from, you know, the bottom of my heart, and I think you all know me well, the intention is really just to ensure that in no way does the acceptance of sewage from Saddle River ever negatively impact Allendale residents and their costs. You know, but I know we can, and I feel comfortable that we can work with Saddle River. They're a good neighbor and everything will be resolved amicably. So that's pretty much it. If anybody, you know, I've, I've talked to most of the council about this already, but if anybody has any questions, I'm always here.
Great. Thank you. Public comment on agenda items. Anyone here from the public wish to be heard on any agenda items? Not seeing anyone. Okay, resolutions and public hearing. Tonight, we are holding our public hearing for Bergen County Open Space Grant Application Improvements at Crestwood Lake Project Phase Two. Michelle, you, you wanna give us some background?
I'm gonna try. So this is the public hearing for the Bergen County Open Space Grant Application. We've entitled this Improvements at Crestwood Lake Phase Two. Bruno Associates, our grant writer is working on this as well as the clerk's office to get them the information. It's due May sixth. So one of the requirements is that we hold a public hearing and invite the public to comment. We've properly noticed it. It's a seventy-five thousand dollar matching grant. And we are requesting sunshades, tables and continuing playground improvements.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Very, very helpful. Open the floor to the public for comments on the grant application. Not seeing anyone, any council members, any comments? Not seeing any. Request a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash one two nine authorized submission of twenty twenty-two Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund Municipal Program Park Improvement Application, Improvements at Crestwood Lake Project Phase Two.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you Ed. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent and Councilwoman Willsinski is absent.
Great. Thank you. Introduction of ordinances, ordinance twenty-two dash oh two. Request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty-two dash oh two and set the hearing for May twelfth, twenty twenty-two at eight P M or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, Holman.
Great, thank you. Second?
Second, Lovasolo.
Thank you. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance twenty-two dash oh two, an ordinance granting consent and permission to Suez Water New Jersey Inc. to furnish water, to furnish water treatment, storage and conveyance service in the borough of Allendale, New Jersey. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent and Councilwoman Willsinski is absent.
Great, thank you. Consent agenda. Anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you Ed. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman O'Toole. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent and Councilwoman Willsinski is absent.
Great, thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? We did all of our committee reports. I did my mayor's report.
I just wanted to note, the other thing on Saturday that was great was the amount of people that signed up to purchase composters. And then we also had for sale rain barrel collection bins, which were like also super cool. So I think the green team did a great job in, in manning that table and in getting the word out on those two.
Yay, composting units. The D P W committee thanks them. That totally decreases the weight of our trash.
Yep.
Yeah, you're good. No, I, I agree.
And we're gonna continue taking orders for them.
Mark Savastano and his team were there and there were people absolutely coming by and they were excited to stop and get the information.
Mark, Mark's daughter, Steven.
Yeah.
And then, yep.
I agree.
It was great.
Tom, any report?
No, I don't think so. I think it's that's far.
Thank you. Michelle, anything you'd like to report?
Sure, thank you. It's been a very busy two weeks. In addition to our regular duties, we've been preparing to grants, putting together Allendale Spring Cleaning Day, gathering info and preparing the two thousand and twenty-one recycling tonnage report, which will be sent to the B C U A tomorrow. Making sure that the annual financial disclosure statements are all filed. Putting together tonight's Jif training, working on the main newsletter and preparing Crestwood Lake for registration and also taking pictures for the new badges. So I just wanted to thank John and Tatiana and Amanda and Tyler and Ron and pretty much everyone else, all the other employees, because it really does take, it's a team effort.
And so, so, so other than that, it's been pretty quiet. I don't know how you do it. I mean, collectively, the team, but you, you, you're the head of that. And no, thank you.
And then I just wanted to say thank you to a resident who showed up at seven twenty-two in the morning for the spring cleaning event. He said, you know, I'm so sorry, I, I know it starts at nine, but I have to leave all my stuff because my wife has a list of things for me to do. And, you know, I was just joking with him and I said, okay, well, you can come back next year and volunteer. And about ten minutes later, he came back and he said, I, I spoke with my wife and she said I can volunteer today. So he stayed and he helped and he absolutely was needed and he was so great. And I only got his first name, so I'm trying to work on getting his last name. But to, to Scott, if he watches this or reads the minutes.
Right.
Thank you, Scott.
Wonderful. That's a real sweet story. Thank you for sharing.
And thank you to his wife. We really needed her.
Thank you. Ron?
Have you reported that a longstanding D P issue down D P W? The ones that closer these last several days, we're escalating some, certain area. Quickly fill in and, and once we get that, a couple of dick, that results, we'll be able to encapsulate, which means millage, forage, and stone and resurface. And at least nineteen ninety-one issue of the result here. Playground renovation of phase two, phase three, I'm moving on very well now. There's a delay due to weather, trees and rain effects of the, of what, three yards of concrete that, that do. That project's gonna last very long. Memorial Day. Downtown street shape project, pre-construction meeting, like this project, all the projects around the country right now, the delay is waiting for the material. Sometime on Memorial Day, it should be sixty-eight inch project downtown area. Being, that next will be from empty bank building to the post office and from the, the, the freeway down to the corner cap. Thanks. Now, pretty much completed by sound, part of the downtown streets. It's a little more, more, not as busy as the clerk's office up here.
I know you do. And everything was great, the talent's great. Thank you. Chief Dylan?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So please, I'm busy with reaccreditation, addressing resident concerns, operational planning, et cetera. My O E M hat, trouble storm Ida reimbursement claim is progressing well, approximately eighty percent. Reimbursement amount has been raised to ninety percent from the customary seventy-five. So that's really good news for the borough. I thank you to Ron for his continued assistance with this application. And I, I have to say, FEMA has been fantastic. The representative that's been given to us for this claim has been nothing but helpful. And the work is a really good team together. I hope that's, you know, inevitably, we're gonna get more storms and I hope that FEMA assigns us the same adjuster. It'd be fantastic. Maybe when this is done, we'll formally thank him or something. Alright, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Tyler, our borough webmaster in I T person?
So total borough facility phone calls since January first has been forty thousand two hundred and twenty-six. I don't know how everybody keeps up with it, but a debt of gratitudes, dispatchers, the clerk's office, the library, everybody takes those calls. I know it's a lot and now we can actually track it. So we had a lot of insights to that, which is great. Since Jif is the theme of the day, we're almost there completing phase two of the insurance requirements regarding our cyber policy. Whichever meeting is not the budget presentation, we'll work with Ron to give a formal presentation to the governing body to suck progress. Other than that, everything's been status quo and general day-to-day operation.
Great. Thank you so much for all that you do. Director of Communications, John Gill.
Main newsletter is starting to compile. If everyone has any additions, please email them to me at SAP. So I'll pick it out. Beginning of next week or mid next week. Besides that, helping with the clerk's office will be a multitude that, that Michelle listed. And the Saturday event was absolutely great, meeting everyone. It's like, well, everyone that came in, it was, it was a good day. So great work by everyone.
And, and I will give you, to you, just your second nature, but I, I pulled through, I was there maybe three times. Every time you were there, a smile on your face.
I was gonna say a huge smile on his face.
Smile greeting whoever came in. And I just, you know, that, that's from the heart, that, that, you know, that's on the inside. No one else is, I mean, I, I took note because I just think it's so wonderful, but that's just a testament to who you are and to everyone. So thank you for that. That's right. That opened the floor to the public. Anyone else wish to be heard on any item at all? Not seeing anyone, I would request the motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second, Lovasolo.
Thank you Suzanne. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, everyone.